...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay, has everyone had the opportunity to look over last month's July 1st, the regular meeting minutes so we can approve them this evening? Did you have a chance?
Yes.
Connie made a motion to approve. Scott approved. All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Do we have any mail that we need to go over? Okay. County attorney? Thank you. Yeah. Transfers and additional reductions. Additional appropriation to county general fund, 1,000. Veterans service to account 20112, office furniture, and the amount of $1,400 is veterans administrator here. Okay. We will move on. Additional appropriation to county general fund, 1,000. Probation to account 30062, contracted detention costs in the amount of $50,000.
Hello.
Hi, Ryan. Ryan.
We've tried our best, but some of the children of Fay County simply won't let us. We've ran out of funds out of that account this year. We're currently about $1,000 in the hole. We don't have anyone detained right now. We were able to get everyone adjudicated, moved on to some other situation, but we are hoping that this $50,000 will be more than we need for the rest, and the rest can come back to you at the end. But we've had a lot of very serious cases this year, once again firearms, a lot of very violent assaults. We've had people escape from when they were wearing their ankle bracelet. It's truly the kids we detain, there's no other alternative. This is actually only 13 children have been detained this year for a total of 266 days, but the facilities keep raising their prices. Delaware County has gone from 195 to 225 this year already, so our money is not going as fast as we used to, or not lasting as long as we're used to. We're doing what we can. We start at the cheapest places where we have to detain and call around till we can find a place, because sometimes it's the one place out of 14 that will take a kid. I'm sorry to be here to ask for money for something like that, but it's kind of the only alternative we have for a lot of those kids.
It's sad for the needs, but the need is there, you know. These kids don't apply or qualify for diversion?
They probably already had two or three. By the time they get to us, these are all felony cases. They are violent felonies, you know, towards the community, their families themselves sometimes. It's all guns, drugs, you know, automobile theft, things where someone could have been seriously hurt, or the amount of what they've destroyed or stolen is astronomical. Those are the only kids we detain. It's, I mean, like I said, we've only done 13 kids this year, and that's about on par, you know, a couple dozen a year is all it really is. Some of them are repeat offenders, they have to go back. You try something, you let them out on the ankle bracelet, they cut it. Or they commit another felony, they steal another gun, they steal another car, and they gotta go right back when we catch them. That's our biggest headache. Everybody pray for Darian Sparks, it's her responsibility to manage all these children, and she does an amazing job, but I know it's... I had hair when I started, when I was doing that back in the day, and now I don't.
What age range are you talking about?
Huh?
What age range?
Twelve to 17.
Twelve to 17-year-olds.
There's been times where we probably needed to detain children under 12, but the facilities with their...
The rest of parents let the kids go.
That... Some days I wish we could just do that.
I think you'd solve your problem if you could.
Sadly, we hold the kids accountable and try to mold them into productive members of society, and sometimes it works.
You mean, they don't know what their 12-year-olds are up to?
Yeah, no, they do not. Honestly, we had a really good fair this year. I think there was only one juvenile arrest at the fair. That is way less than we usually have. It's usually half a dozen or more, so I think this fair was very calm, so I was thrilled we didn't have to detain anyone at the fair. It's usually just a battle royale of kids who want to fight each other for some reason. I'm there to ride the tilt-a-whirl. I don't know why nobody else would do that.
I think I missed it. What did you say the cost per day was?
Well, the one that is closest to us is 225, but some of them are over 400. There is one in Dearborn, Dunham, Lawrenceburg, whatever county that is, it's like 135, but they only hold a few kids, and it's hard to catch them when they have an opening. We do try to get them to the cheaper places, but a lot of times it's Delaware County and then Franklin, Indiana, they have, if you got Johnson County, they have larger facilities, so you have better luck. But like Marion County, they won't take out of county kids, neither will Madison County, Hamilton County, they only, so you can't even use theirs, so it's just whoever will allow outside jurisdictional children to be incarcerated. They've got their own problems, they don't need any of ours.
How many did you say, Dearborn held eight?
You think about eight, eight or 12, something like that. It's very small.
And does that cover both Dearborn and Ohio?
Yeah, because they're a shared jurisdictional category.
Right. And do you know how much Johnson is?
I think it's 200.
Is it?
Yeah. They're all, the average seems to be 200.
Okay.
Lake County's a little bit smaller, and that's also, what, a four-hour drive one way?
Right, right.
Yeah, so we try to avoid that one low cost.
And Johnson's about the same distance.
Yeah.
Different.
Yeah, they're pretty reliable and decent. Any other questions?
Would someone like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion to... On this additional $50,000.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Thank you, Ryan. Thank you for the job that you do.
Thank you.
Okay. Additional appropriation to statewide 911 fund, 1222, to account 1061, overtime and holiday pay in the amount of $12,000. Is there anyone here to speak on behalf of 911? Okay. We will table that and move on. Are there any 144s that we need to discuss? Old business, reminder that the budget hearings...
Sharon, go ahead, sorry. I added to the agenda this transfer request from the coroner.
Okay. We do have one more transfer request form. This is from the Department of the Coroner from budget line 20420 to budget line 40400. Budget line title, photo equipment. It would be under equipment. The amount requested is $500. Their present balance is $500. So if this is approved, they will have a zero balance, and it's to purchase a camera. So this is coming out of the coroner's fund, right?
Yeah, it's money that he already had, it was just in a supply line that he needs to move it to an equipment line.
Okay. Would someone like to approve this?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay. And then on old business, we want to remind everyone that the budget hearing starts on 8/12/2025 at 9:00 a.m., and it will be here in the commissioner's meeting room. And in new business, review of estimated property tax levy limits and estimated reductions due to circuit breakers, and I move to accept from the DLGF and make no recommendations.
Second.
Second. Okay. All in favor? Do you know what that is?
No.
Okay. Do you want to explain that, Jane?
Are you getting the county emails?
As of today, yes.
Okay, so you weren't, because I just, it was in an email from... The DLGF each year prints, they give for all the units in a county what the projected circuit breaker credits are, so that's money that will be lost because of credits. And then they also give maximum levy amounts. So the county council at their first meeting in August is supposed to review these numbers, and then you have the option to make recommendations to the units, like if anybody would have been here from, let's say, City of Connersville, would have come and questioned it, you could make a recommendation to them. Or if, every year since I've been here, they've chosen to do no recommendation. We just, we have to review them in a meeting, but we don't have to, you don't have to make a recommendation regarding them.
Is that the most on the floor now, no recommendation?
That's right.
No recommendation.
What is it, what would you recommend? I mean, what, so what would you recommend? What are you recommending?
I know in the past councils have just made recommendations, so I mean, I don't, I don't know what the recommendation would be, I mean, to me, the numbers are what the numbers are, so.
It's not asking for any more money, or?
Yeah, no, it's just, it's just the Department of Local Government Finance prints out, like for us, for example, it gives an amount, so like our tax cap credits for county general this year is going to be $1,571,000. So it's kind of an informational thing where they're saying, this is how much money you're going to lose because of the tax cap credits, or what some people call circuit breakers. So, and it's kind of got like the proposed levy amounts, which that number's in blue and hard to read probably, but like for county general this year, our 2026 proposed levy's going to be $7,220,181. So it's, to me, it's more informative than anything.
Jane, just for clarification. When I say the limits, is that the new assessment that's setting the limits, it doesn't have anything to do with the old assessments that we're working with, does it? Is that new assessments is coming in? Because we know the prices have gone up.
Okay, the tax cap credits, the circuit breakers are, like for certain properties, we can't bill more than 2% of your gross estimate.
Yeah, let's say my home's $100,000, now it's worth $150,000. We still get the $100,000, we may not be able to get the extra 50.
Well, you would, you would get a credit to reduce your taxes to a certain amount. So that, that is saying that throughout all the, like for us as a county, that for the county general fund, for all the funds together that are property tax funds, it's going to be $1,874,700 is what they're estimating. So that is almost $2 million that we will lose because of credits that we have to give to people, whether it's an over 65 credit, whether it's just a regular circuit breaker where you can't bill more than 2% of a property, I mean, there's several rules there on what can happen, but yeah, we're going to lose.
The county's lost, but the residents gain.
Right.
Yeah. I think the credit is kind of a confusing term.
Yeah.
The county doesn't get a credit, the county loses to the resident, to the taxpayer.
Yeah.
Did someone make a motion?
Yes, you did. Then I seconded it.
And then you seconded, and then all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Okay, so moved. Okay, and then we have Brad Coulter here, the director of the EDG. Glad to have you.
Got a short meeting, so I'll give you my 45-minute speech today.
All in favor, Jim?
I just, I wanted to pop in. I haven't been here yet since I started, and I'm beginning my fourth month on the job, so I felt like I'm starting to get a halfway decent idea of what I'm supposed to be doing now. I've met with some of you, and I want to, the ones that I haven't, I want to try to get together with at some point, give a little more lengthy discussion with you about what my ideas are and what I think that I'm supposed to be doing. But so far, I've had about 75 or more meetings with people in the field of economic development, people that can teach me something and help me learn what we, what we are supposed to be doing. We spend, locally, we've spent a lot of time managing a property, and I said today at the commissioner's meeting, we're trying to get out of that business. We'll probably be selling that building to the person that owns the factory here before too long. And some of the other things, I've spoken to a lot of groups, I want to try to make our office more visible to the public and be more transparent about what we do at EDG. I said today, it's not the CIA, so I'm going to be out there talking about what we're up to. I mean, there's a lot, there's things we can't, Scott knows, but there's things we can't talk about, but there's a lot of things that we can talk about. The things that I am talking about are the, are the tenants of economic development, and I try to look at things through the lens of the employers. What are they looking for in a community when they, when they consider us? And those things are workforce development strongly, looking at that. I'll call it daycare, early learning. A lot of employers have trouble getting people to come to work because they don't have daycare. So that's an issue that we can help be a driver on. Livability, downtown revitalization, there's just a lot of areas that I call building blocks. Of course, the goal is to bring strong businesses, good-paying jobs to the local economy, but there are things that we have to do to set a foundation to do that, and that's what I'm going to start out, trying to work on. Trying to build relationships and partners, partnerships. I've had people from the IEDC in here several times already to visit with us. We had a visitor last Thursday or Friday, and I took them all around Connersville. We went to the museum, talked about the past and what we want to be in the future. And I'm becoming active in all of the fraternal economic development organizations, trying to meet people and become a friendly and familiar face to people in the business. I think that's one thing that we haven't been doing a great job at, and already I think they're probably getting sick of looking at me, because I'm going to everything, just trying to be a sponge, trying to learn, trying to understand what we're doing wrong. We had a great meeting with Duke Energy a couple of days ago. They brought a bunch of site selectors to Connersville, and we got to go through sort of a mock process on one of our local sites that we offer for attraction proposals. And it was real eye-opening and a learning experience for me in the beginning of taking this job, because, you know, you don't just sell a farm field to somebody and they build a factory and open it. There's a lot of infrastructure, things that have to be done. It helped me understand when we offer sites on these proposals, what all it takes to make a good site and a good proposal. So one of the things I intend to work on first is trying to do what they call BRI visits, business retention and expansion. Talk to your local industry that are already here and see what they need, see what we can do to help them in the area workforce, workforce development, or we have a revolving loan fund that we can offer, those kind of things. And my first big goal is to get a workforce development roundtable together where employers and trainers and everybody comes to the same table and talk, and just so we can try to understand what our local employers need and try to help facilitate providing that for them. So the last thing, I know that you're really in a pinch with funding and everything right now, I know that that's all being talked about, and we appreciate what you've done in the past. I hope that you're able to stay in the game at some level with us and give us a chance to, over the next year, show value as an organization to the growth of the community, so.
Brad, are there any vacant buildings in our industrial park up here that's a room for expansion in that area, industrial park north of town?
Not a lot, but we have, there is quite a bit of room still in the new Nova Lex building, Phoenix property up there. I think that once Nova Chemicals expands to the greatest level, they'll get to, there'll still be half that building left. So that's a, that's going to be a good opportunity to put somebody in. The site that we were talking about yesterday was the farm field just north of that building. That's another real good site. There's a lot of water and gas and utility capacity up there.
That's important to have room for expansion, because if you start doing the job that I'm sure you're going to do, we're going to be needing a place to put people, and maybe we build some buildings.
I hope so. Anyway, I just wanted to come say hi, and if any of you have any questions for me or anything I can help with, be sure to let me know.
Are there, are there state funds available for spec, for spec buildings or anything like that?
Well, IEDC has a lot of funding resources, but one thing I've found during this time, that every, all the funding sources are in sort of a state of flux right now, nobody really understands. I got to see the governor speak last week, and his focus is on small business and entrepreneurship, and he doesn't want to keep just giving gazillions of dollars to people to move companies here, and then five years later, they're looking to go somewhere else and get another gazillion dollars, so I kind of understand where he's coming from on that, but right now, I think we're just in a period of time where everybody's trying to adjust to the new look of everything. So we have a small amount of money, probably about $350,000 that we can loan in amounts up to $150,000 if somebody wants to buy a piece of equipment or something like that.
How about the ready grant?
Well, that's one of my new jobs, is to help be the, sort of the liaison between that funding source and the local projects, so I've spent quite, matter of fact, I had a meeting with 4GCI, they're the, sort of the managing partner for the money. I'm on the steering committee now with that, and we were talking about our local projects and those funds, so. Our two local projects, one of them is the local performing arts building, and then the other one is to get the hospital torn down and get that turned into a nice space.
What time, will it be next year before we can apply again, or wait two years?
Again, that's another program that nobody's sure if it has a future beyond 2.0. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Brad. Okay. I'm going to, this is, this is new business, and this is something that I want to bring before the board this evening. We most likely will have to implement a hiring freeze for the time being. This would be on a case-by-case basis, so we would ask that any openings that anyone has that you might need to fill to wait until you have presented your 144 request and have received approval for that position prior to advertising the position. There may be instances where you may be asked if you could fill or replace that position with part-time help instead, or disperse that position duties to other staff members. And I believe this is going to be a, before we start the budget, I think this is something that needs to be discussed. No comments?
I agree with you. I agree with you.
Okay. We are, we have been implementing and stressing the need to, and then one other area that I feel like needs to have restrictions on is the training that people are attending and requesting funding for. I feel like if it is not required, then we should restrict it to only the required trainings that people need to attend if they're expecting to be reimbursed. So if people want to be, if they want to attend the trainings, it would be out-of-pocket for them, and the county will not be paying for it unless it is a requirement for us to attend.
Just for clarification, who makes the decision whether an employee that leaves that is that they're replaceable decision or not? Is that going to be the elected official or the county, or what?
That would go through probably the commissioners, and another thing that I am proposing is a time study be done to see just exactly what we do need and don't need, because I think that's something that we have not done, and people can come in and say they need help, but do they really, or are they implementing the time management that they need to be implementing, therefore to get the work that is required, and are they working the hours they're supposed to be in getting their job done? And like I said, this is up for discussion. This is, this is, I'm just bringing it to the board, because we are going to have to implement some changes in the way we're doing these are ideas, so I'm open to...
Well, your time study, Sharon, I think between the council members, we could probably do that instead of hiring someone.
Now, how do you propose that would happen?
We could rotate and take, or we could sit in the office all day.
No.
Good.
No. I don't see that happening for the plain fact, do we understand everything that is supposed to be done? Do we know? I don't think that we, I don't think that would be an accurate time study, that's my opinion, I'm just putting that out here.
How much has staffing changed over the last five years?
I don't have that in front of me. This is just something that with the budget that is coming up and what we have asked department heads and offices to do, this is just something, because there's been a couple places that has made the comment, they have not came before us, I don't know if they have, the commissioners or not, but they have not came before us to ask for additional help in their offices, and I, this is just me saying, as president of the board, I think this is something before those, what do you want to call, requests come, that everybody's on the same page. And all the commissioners are here, I mean, so your input, if you would like to say something also.
What I'll say about it is, we're, I think, at a critical juncture in, in terms of, are we going to be proactive and deal with things now while we still can and still have some choices? Or are we going to end up being reactive down the line? And I think what you're talking about is proactive with a hiring freeze and limiting the training to only what's required.
What's required.
Now, when we get into the time study stuff, I get a little, first of all, I'd like to encourage a professionally-done time study, that it might be worth our while to do that. However, that's more of a commissioner role to me. I would encourage the commissioners to have one done, but I don't know that we ought to be the body that handles that, because they are the executive body that runs it.
I agree.
You see what I mean?
I agree.
I would strongly encourage them to do that.
Well, I agree, but I believe that's something, being the, the body that does implement the funding, that if a time study is not done and we don't know if that money is being appropriately used, then, then someone needs to implement it. And like I said, the commissioners are here, they're, I would love to hear, you know, if you have something that you want to say in this area, because with issues that have been going on, I think we just need to, to make some decisions.
We want to ensure the efficiency is, is there, right?
Exactly.
So, because the tax dollars that are being brought in are going to be waning, you know, so we have to make sure we get the biggest bang for every, every dollar we have to work with, so we can provide the necessary services to the people of the county.
I've got a comment about the, the elected official training, those are not... I've got a comment about the, the elected official training, those are not tax dollars? So there's no, really no reason to put a freeze on training?
I didn't say we would restrict them to only people on the conferences and stuff that is required. A lot of trainings that are attended are not required. So that's all I'm saying.
Well, I've already signed up for one. It's not required, but there's elected training fund, elected official training funds, plenty available for me to go. I already signed up for it.
Yeah, and that I'm aware of, but what I'm saying is.
We're not going to pay for it.
Why?
We're not going to pay for it.
Well, just because the money is there, we can still use it for required trainings instead of just going because it's available.
Well, most offices, most of the officials out there are required and a lot of them have it built into their budget, so.
Well, if it's built into their budget, then it is tax dollars.
Right, then it is, yes.
Yeah, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the elected official fund.
But there again, if it's just going to go.
Well, how do you get, if you don't go, how are you going to stay on top of what's going on?
Because they usually send the PowerPoints and all the conference and emails. You can get the same, everyone I've been to, I always get the PowerPoints and the ones that I haven't attended, they send the PowerPoints and the information upon request.
You don't get them automatically?
Not if I don't sign up for it. But you can sign up for it and they will send them to you.
Well, you still miss that on collaboration with other people and finding out what's going on just beside the PowerPoint.
I mean, we can debate it all evening, but I still feel like there should be a restriction on that. And we have a board that can decide that also. So I'm just saying if we're having other people cut their offices and funding, then we have to cut somewhere too.
But elected official funds are not tax dollars. That's all I'm saying.
I understand that. I understand that. But there are required.
Scott said it.
I mean, I guess I'm just, I'm a little confused about elected official funds not being tax dollars. What do you mean?
They come from fees and people pay by copying or something like that. It's not tax dollars.
Where does that come from, the elected official fees?
Well.
It's recording fees.
Okay.
Like it's just every time, sort of like the same way that the partners perpetuation or transfer fee flat books, like some of those funds are funded by fees.
Like the recorder perpetuation of funders fees and that type of thing.
Okay. How much of the time is required for us? None?
None for county council.
Like I said, I've already signed up and I want to go and I've already, you know.
Well, you have till the 19th and that's what, I was, you have till the 19th to sign up, that's a cutoff. So the only thing that I am suggesting is that, I mean, if you want to go, then it would be out of pocket instead of us paying for it, instead of the county paying for it, is what I'm saying. If the board decides that, I mean, that's.
I don't know if you can do that now.
Yeah, yeah, you can. Yeah. Yeah. Because it's not required. If it was required, no, we could not.
We should have required because there's a lot of things you miss if you don't go.
Okay, that will be a board, then we will have to take a vote on that, on how it should be dealt with. I was just making the suggestion on the hiring freeze, the restriction on training if not required and those are my recommendations. So do we need to take a vote on each one? Singly, probably, yes.
I would not do a roll call vote.
I'm going to have a motion.
Yeah, there's not a motion, there's not anything.
Right. I got another question.
Okay.
So if it's not required, how often have you ever in the past designated people to go? Like as such, like naming a committee or like I'd like for you to go to that or I'd like for you to go to this one? No?
The county council has a state called meeting. So say what if a council will do a state called meeting in June? That one, like they send out a letter when they do a state called meeting and they will tell you how much they'll reimburse and how much, so everybody could choose to go to that one and the county has to pay for that. But that is, it's not a required training, but it is a state called meeting. But for other meetings, like when you go to, okay, I was just getting myself in the airport. So the state board of council does two state called meetings a year for the auditor. So in the spring they did, it was a two-day meeting, one was virtual and one was a quadrant meeting in Lawrenceburg. So I just drove there that day, drove back, all I had was mileage. Then in the fall, they will do, it's like a three-day conference and they'll send out that letter and they'll say that, okay, so if the conference is Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, then I'm entitled to reimbursement for the motel for Tuesday, Wednesday and Thursday nights in mileage and whatever, it's all spelled out in the letter. Now, the auditors association also did a conference in July, it was a couple of weeks ago. That is not required by the state and is not covered, it's not a state called meeting. So I chose not to go to that. I chose to save the county the money and just, but that's, I mean, that's my choice, but not everybody does that. I think what Sharon is trying to say is for the meetings that are just like conferences or association meetings or whatever, those are not state called meetings. We don't have to pay for them, it's just another way to save money. And there are some offices statutorily, so by statute have to have training hours. Recorder, treasurer, auditor, sheriff, surveyor, clerk, I know are all included in that. And it's by statute, like I have to have 15 continuing education credits a year and 45 within my four-year, which doesn't make sense math-wise because if I have to have 15 a year, it's 60 in the four years, but it says, that's what the statute says, 15 a year, total of 45. But I get all this from state called conferences, like I don't need to do additional trainings.
I was going on, some gave this conversation earlier, he was telling somebody about city council, how we did like budget as a committee and we did negotiations as a committee. And so I was just thinking, wondering if you had done something like that, like, you know, you wanted somebody to go to something to learn more about X and somebody else to learn more about Y and I just didn't know if you did that.
Kay and I attended the one in June, yes. And I did not turn in the, I'm going, I'll pay for that myself. I just, that's my part, that's what I feel like. Yes, I can turn it in, but I just, I feel like if everyone else is required to cut costs and stuff, that's where I'm at with it. So that's all I'm saying. And if I want to go to the one at the end of September, then it will come out of my But that is not required. That's what I'm saying. It's not required. So does anyone want to make a motion on the restriction on the training? We'll start with that. Is there further comments that needs to be made?
I don't disagree with any of these ideas. I think that a lot of her very good. I don't like the timing of it. It wasn't on the agenda. The department heads aren't informed of this. I think they should have the right to come in and say their piece and say what they think. So at this moment, I wouldn't be ready to vote for it and I would recommend we postpone those to the next meeting.
So the budget?
Until our next regular meeting.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion on that?
No, there's no motion, so there's no postponement.
No, there's no.
Well, I'm going to make a motion to postpone.
Table, table.
Table.
Table your, table the topic.
Table the topic.
Does somebody else make that? Are you making a motion? Yes, okay.
I'll make a second.
Okay. And then do we want it just all in favor? We don't need to do a roll call on that? Just all in favor?
Ah.
Okay, yes. Okay, and then the next would be on the hiring freeze.
I feel the same way with that one.
Same way?
Yeah, I mean, like, I don't know what the life's like for all the department heads. I mean, they know what employees they got. I think they need to come and speak to that as well. I mean, and all three of those things we talked about with the hiring freeze, I think they need to have at least to come and say, so I would, I would recommend we postpone those all till.
Now, on the postponing, the only reason that I disagree with that is because it can be changed. It's just a hiring freeze as of right now. We're getting ready to do the budgets. If after the budgets, if they can show that they have the money to hire someone, then that's fine. But I feel like right now, you know, then why proceed with the budgeting if we're going to allow people just to hire?
Yeah, I agree. I would make a motion to do a hiring freeze.
So that's, and like I said, it can change.
It's temporary, temporary hiring freeze.
Sharon, let's clarify that. But then their budget, then we'll probably let it, but we're not going to give additional funding to hire somebody, is that what you're saying? Am I missing?
Yes. It'd be a case by case.
So are you wanting a freeze, all hiring or additional hiring? Because there's a difference.
It would be additional.
So anything.
Replace.
But if anything's.
Make sure, because I don't think that's what you're saying.
No, I don't think it is.
Yeah, so the last time they put a hiring freeze in place, they didn't allow people to replace people.
Replace, right, and that's.
Man, we're all in agreement, we're in a position where we're not excited about creating new jobs. I don't think that's right.
But it's our budget and money, so like it would have to be a complete hiring freeze, which I think we should postpone till later.
Just want to make sure we're all talking, which you're talking the same language I think as you guys are talking. Make sure that you're, yes.
Okay. So you have a motion on the table?
We have, we have, I think Kay made a motion.
I made a motion to do a hiring freeze.
Okay.
Which is, and I want to make sure, just so the record's clear, when you described it, you described it as not a hiring freeze, but a hiring freeze in the fact that they had to get permission.
Yes.
Whereas in the past, it's kind of been approved, that a position open is a position that can be filled.
Yes, because it's already, right.
You're just saying now, you want them to come and get approval before they fill an empty position.
Before they fill an empty position, exactly.
Take them case by case, yes.
It'd be a case by case and no additional added.
I think no additional. I'd be looking at you guys cross-eyed if you started adding new positions right now.
Yeah, so that's, okay.
And so we will also talk about that during the interactions on the budget meeting with the actual department heads as well?
Yes, absolutely.
So actually more will come out individually then?
Yes. And there again, during with each specific department head, the restriction on the education and training could be discussed also because they're putting forth their budget for that. That's just how I was looking at it. That's why I said we need to do it before the budget so we can discuss it during the budget.
And like she said, a case by case situation, so.
Right.
It's not like a closed door.
Right, right.
So normally they don't have to come?
We have a motion on the floor by Kay to implement a, essentially an empty position being filled freeze to which they would have to garner approval prior to advertising for that position.
Yes.
Kay, I want to speak for you, is that your motion?
Say it one more time.
Good luck. Kay has moved to implement a hiring freeze essentially for open positions before they are filled, they need to seek approval to be able to advertise over that position.
Yes.
Kay, you agree?
And we're going to take it case by case.
Yes, it's.
Yes, it's a case by case.
There's some positions you have to fill, guys, and some positions you can't not have.
Yes.
That's why, what I'm wondering, you know, if they lose a key employee, what we're saying is you cannot replace that till we review it.
That's what you're essentially saying.
Yes, which could be, like you says, 30 days before, so they will do without that employee for 30 days.
At least.
Yeah, and could be further.
Well, we've had people come before us and said, I'm going to be losing this person come November and I'm wanting to hire, well, is that person someone you have to have as a pleasure for that person? They usually let you know a month or two ahead of time, Tim, if they're going.
Not always, but some of them walk out the door.
I don't know that, I've never known.
Yeah, I'll give you that.
Retirement, maybe.
And that's what I said when I read it off. This would be a case by case basis, so we would ask that any openings that you may have that you need to fill to wait until you have presented your 144 request and received approval for that position prior to advertising the position. So that's basically what you're saying.
That's not what I'm saying. I want it to be clear. That's what I think Kay's motion is.
Okay.
Very clear, right? Kay, correct? Okay.
But I think that, I think that goes, okay, so let me start. Okay, so if they have a, if they have an opening left by someone, they don't normally have to come and ask to replace that person?
If it's in their budget.
If it's in their budget. So we're saying, we don't want you to do that, but then we're saying, well, maybe, maybe. But, but we're trying to cut or ask you to try to do.
I didn't, I thought they had to go through the commissioners.
Try to do something else.
They have to go through the commissioners.
So they don't have to come back to council.
Right, right, but they're going to have to go through somebody before they just hire somebody, is what I'm saying.
So, well, so, but you're asking them to try to either have more than somebody else do to spread their job out or have another person try to do their job? So I think we're talking a little bit of everything.
I'm not, I'm not trying to speak for anybody here, but I think a little bit the idea behind it, similar to what was done in 2020 by the then council because of COVID. So what they said, there was a whole letter that was written and council as a whole approved it and then they had a department head meeting and basically they explained, there are people already talking layoffs, okay? So part of the idea behind the hiring freeze is if a year from now you're going to do layoffs, well, if I've got an opening, rather than me advertise that position and hire Suzie Q off the street, maybe if you think you're going to cut a staff member from probation, let's say, I take that probation person. Like you try to fill spots.
In-house.
From within and allow, you know, and that way, if that went on long enough, a year from now, maybe you had enough people leave that you shuffled around that you don't have to do layoffs after all. I think was the idea behind it. So at that time, there was a full letter, but it said that they encouraged you to hire from within, hire, you know, off of the job to other, use part-time if available. I mean, there were, there were options. And there were actually, in 2020, there were three offices that were affected by that. At the time, it was my office, the prosecutor's office and clerk's office where we had, like I had someone leave and had to wait seven or eight months to replace them until we got past, you know, when you saw what the effects of the COVID was going to be and then council reopened and allowed each of these offices to go ahead and replace the person that they had lost. But there was just a time.
And I think if there were that level of detail and there was something in writing that could see, I think that it'd be very appropriate to do right now. We've not met with department heads and we've not, well, we really have, we're kind of in this ad hoc, so I don't think right now the timing is justified.
Well, I think because next week you will be meeting with all the department heads with Sharon's timing.
Sure, but we haven't done it yet. So I would rather make, I'd rather meet with them before we make any decisions. That's just the way I hope.
I agree.
I disagree, but that's fine. I mean, that's, that's why we're bored.
Well, we have a motion, do we have a second? That would be my essentially the way I would proceed. I haven't heard a second.
To wait or?
No, no, to second to Kay's motion.
To do the freeze?
Correct.
I said that.
Please do a roll call. I'm going to hear a roll call. Okay. Council, do you agree, yes or no?
You make her go first.
Yeah, thanks.
Well, I usually.
First, roll call, go.
I started that end, I'm sorry.
Oh, gosh. I don't know, I don't think we have enough information. I would say no.
Yes.
We have a discussion just a second. Hiring freeze, they cannot pre-hire unless they come before this body, is that part of the motion?
It didn't have to go through the commissioners, yes, yes.
Commissioners, okay, all right, there's no, we're hoping for.
Yeah, I still have a lot of questions. I feel like, where are they at in all this? I mean.
Where do we walk?
Where, I mean, they, like you said, they go.
We don't move until they do. That's the commissioners?
But like you said, I mean, some things you can't wait, I mean.
Well, it's not life or death.
Right now, Connie, the commissioners, any offices hiring anybody, they have to go before commissioners with a 144 and they give, basically the commissioners are kind of approving the names because anybody that's coming with a 144 to commissioners, like I wouldn't be coming to them with a 144 to hire somebody if it wasn't already in my budget. So, so right now, the process would be during budget time, you guys all approve the budgets and then the commissioners throughout the year, as people have time. And then the commissioners throughout the year, as people have to hire people with that budgeted money, they approve the 144s. And normally, nobody's going to come back to you guys with the 144 because you've already approved all your 144s at budget time. Does that make sense?
Maybe, yeah.
So, so right now, what, what they're proposing is.
It would feel like you have it covered anyway, in a sense.
I'm sorry.
You feel like you kind of have it covered. I mean, we're not.
Now, this, she's going to tell you what this impact would do, how this would change it.
Yeah, if you, if you put a hiring freeze in place before they would go to commissioners with a name, like before I would offer somebody the position and appear at the commissioners meeting and ask for permission to go ahead and hire this person, I would have to come to council first and explain why my position is dire and you need to fill it right now and give me that permission.
So it's hard to understand this, but, but when you come, and you correct me if I'm wrong, because I'm not on, but when you, when you say, okay, Office A loses an employee, the process, as I understand it, is they go ahead and advertise for it. They go ahead and interview people and they don't go into the commissioners until they have the name. And let's pretend this is already in the budget, this position budget. They don't go to, and this has always kind of been backwards to me and I've always kind of been terrified of what happens when the commissioners say no. But you have, you are effectively already offering the position to someone. Sometimes the person is already working in that position before they get to the commissioners and the commissioners are essentially approving that person to fill that position. Does that make sense?
Right.
There is no, I mean, I, I, and I don't want to speak out of turn, but a lot of times that is the case to where there's somebody already working by the time it gets to the commissioners.
That's not supposed to happen.
There's certainly an advertisement for the position and interviews.
All of that happens.
Before it's ever gone to the commissioners for approval to, to, for that position. Does that make sense? I'm, I'm taking Kay's motion. The difference in the impact will be if somebody loses somebody in their office, they can't advertise to replace it until they come before this council and describe why it would be imperative for that position to happen. Either it's required or that, that they can explain their office dynamics and say it would be impossible for this office to, to work out if not. Or maybe they come and say, hey, can I get a part-time because I think I can, I know we're in a tough spot. I want you to give me benefit a year from now, but I, I think I can make it work for part-time. The difference would be they can't advertise and conduct interviews until somebody they kind of have the job, until they come to you guys. And I want to speak out of turn. Commissioners, Mr. Strong, you've been, I mean, am I kind of describing correctly?
Yes, I, I can hear pretty well, I'm sorry.
So the difference, so the distinction would be they now, before they could do anything, they lose John Doe from position C in their department. They can't do anything until this board looks at it and renews it. I think Councilman Nobby's concern and Councilman Patterson's concern is that could really delay some of these positions staying open. So that's kind of your concern is, and then you heard the, the pros of doing it and then there's some cons to doing it. The pros are, hey, it could keep us from actually ever having to lay off anybody. Because that's the ultimate goal is you don't want to lay anyone off. You may have to move some people around in positions, but there is the con of, right now, you kind of operate that way because it gets somebody filled in a position that's needed quickly. This could slow things down pretty quickly, I mean, pretty dramatically for some people.
Right. And Sharon, you're also sort of wanting to implement this in lieu of doing the time study.
Yes, yes.
Because you may have a, I'm just going to throw out something like an office that has maybe eight people.
Yeah.
I don't know if there is.
Yeah.
You know, and maybe they do this one. Well, do they really need to have that eight person refi, you know, replaced? I mean, I get that, but do you have a, is there, should there be a timeframe on this freeze or until?
We're going to know, when we get through budget, we're going to know.
Right.
So are you saying that?
It's just like plugging the hole.
Like.
It could be a year.
Well, I get that.
Or two, or three.
No, it's not going to be a year.
Well, that's why. It would just be something until, the reason that I wanted to do it now, and I talked with Jane about it, is because the budgets are coming up so we can see what the needs are going to be and what the money, the budgets is going to be there. And instead of, you know, just not knowing what's going on, it's just kind of a keeping everything where we are like, you know, Mr. Westling was saying, keeping it more or less to me in, in, in control. That's, that's what I.
Like a safety net.
A safety net, I guess, yeah. But that's my opinion.
I guess I don't like how it's worded, maybe.
Again, I don't like the fact that we haven't advertised this to the department heads. They have no idea this is.
Not that I don't.
They may be in the process. I think this is not a good way to.
But if they're not, I mean, they could be, and, well, the thing is, they may be in the process, but do, do we have the money to implement the hiring?
You guys approved the budget from last year for, so it's in the budget from last year.
Well, not for 26. But not for 26.
With 26, you're right.
Yeah, and that's why we're getting ready to go into.
And speak on this.
Go ahead.
I, 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 I feel like I shouldn't speak at these things, but then I want to. Some of this is, is coming up. Okay, so if, if you guys are going to cut budgets, I don't want to hire somebody right now and then four months, or not even four months, a month and a half from now, find out you're going to cut my budget and now I have to, I have to lay off that person. And if you remember, a couple of weeks ago, I sent an email because there are so many rumors going around. All of these department heads have already heard layoffs. They've already heard, I mean, I have had some people in my office already expressing their opinions of, well, this is what I think ought to happen and, you know, to myself, to staff members. So I, I, I think, I guess where you're saying that, that they need to be notified, but.
They should have.
It's kind of coming up because it, it keeps being talked about, you know.
Well, it's been talked about, but no action's been talked, been actually discussed until.
Yeah.
A few minutes ago. So I, I don't think that's going to be.
No, I, I, I don't disagree. That's why I tried to bring it out. And I said, if you were going to do it, then it needed to be officially done in a meeting and not a behind-the-scenes, somebody sending texts or emails or going around the offices, you know.
We, we have a motion in a second and there's been one, is there, is it been two votes, guess?
Nobody voted yes.
Nobody?
Did, did you go ahead and vote, Connie? I'm sorry.
I'm a, no.
Okay.
I think, yes.
That's fine. So, Riker, Peyton?
Yes.
Patterson?
No.
Okay, Nobby?
No.
Okay. Stewart?
No.
Babbington?
No, I don't think it goes far enough.
Cranfield?
Yes.
Oh, okay. So motion failed five to two. Two to five.
You'd take, you'd take, for instance.
Fight against.
Just Jane and your office, if you would lose your key employee, three days later, you lose another one. You know, we're talking.
I'm calling a special meeting and y'all are going to come in here and be my person.
Right, that's where you have a special meeting.
No, it's a good, it's a good point.
But you don't have to wait 30 days. You can have a special meeting. That's why I'm saying this, to me.
But it can put you, it can put you in one heck of a bind.
Yes, yes. Well, the worst part is, is you would want to, to be able to advertise immediately. Because I, I mean, I, I have been through two rounds of advertising. I've had open, an open position for some time. I've been through two rounds of advertising that, um, one, I got no applicants at all. One, I got one applicant and it was not someone.
Not even close.
Yeah, yeah, that had no experience.
So now, then, then you lose another one.
So, yeah.
What do you want to do?
That would be, it would be very hard.
Extremely difficult.
Yeah.
You, you stay in business.
The timing, I have a feeling that you guys have brought attention to this subject tonight. And it's going to be then during budget meetings, you're going to have department heads all, and you're going to be able, I mean, the timing actually could work out quite well. It's better that it was talked about tonight if you're even thinking about it than if it wasn't, Ron.
The 12th and 13th should be fun.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
But I have a feeling you're going to have some department heads passionate about it. You'll have some that it won't bother too much, but you'll have some who will be very passionate about it. And maybe that's, and maybe that's the riddle and maybe that's the answer. Maybe the answer is we're willing to have special meetings. We're not going to make you wait 30 days, something like that.
You know, there's, there's more than one cure.
Yeah, and special meetings, quick notice and you're good to go. You know what I mean? So that might be the answer, just getting, you know, at least four of you round up.
I've been in a position where it has to be done and nobody to do it.
So you did it.
He'll keep you awake at night.
Yeah, well, I'd do it right now. I know exactly what it's like. You get it? No. Okay. And then the other was, I think we did the hiring freeze and then the training. We need to decide what we're doing on that. We did not help.
We, we actually took a motion.
Okay, it did.
Councilman Nobby, move to table the discussion of training Councilman Stewart's seconded motion here.
Okay, so both of them are.
Training is good, hiring freeze is good. I feel like you had four.
Yes, the time study. Yeah, the time study was one.
And I, but I don't, I don't think the idea of a hiring freeze is completely off the table. I, you know, Councilman Nobby's thing was, and I think Councilman Patterson agreed with him, is that, you know, we need to, talk, talk a little bit more about it. And my, my thing was, I just think it, I'm okay with talking to everybody else, but I, I have a feeling, unless I hear otherwise, between now and then, that this shouldn't be a, we'll come see us first. This just needs to be an across-the-board hiring freeze, period.
That's what I'm saying.
You, you lose somebody and then, you know, but that wasn't the motion. Motion was that, right? So that's why I was like.
So we're going to go into these budgets, people coming in wanting to hire people, and we're going to have to tell them at that point, no.
Well, if, if.
So it's like, if we did this, it's, it is across the board, period.
Well, I mean, there.
I don't think anybody's coming to budget meeting wanting for money to hire additional people. I can't imagine that's the case.
If they're doing their job the right way, they're not going to be replacing people without having a pretty good idea that, that that job's going to be there come January. I don't know anybody who'd take the job.
Right.
Under those kinds of conditions.
I think that, I think everything's out of order. I think the time study needs to be done to see where you're at, to see how you react. But I, react is a bad word because I agree with you, Scott, about being reactive, so proactive. But as far as like, like your numbers, you know, because what if you find out that eight office really is only six? Then what are you doing?
Well, that could take care of the budget meeting. You don't need eight people.
Well, I mean, you know, you, maybe you lost the seventh, but now you're going to be getting rid of one more.
Okay, so moving forward, commissioners, did you have anything that you wanted to say this evening?
Do you want to hear anything today?
Sure.
Well, you met for three hours. Surely you talked about something.
Well, first of all, I want to welcome Connie Durham as the newest member of county council. If you're wondering right now how you got here, six months from now, you'll probably be wondering how the rest of us got here. So, but I wish you luck and this is going to be one of the biggest learning experiences you've had in a long time. It's a little bit different over here than it is at the city, but you, I think you'll get the gist of it very quickly. Today, the commissioners approved 144s to hire.
Now you should have led it with this.
We approved 144s to hire one part-timer and one full-timer in the clerk's office and three part-timers at the 911 dispatch center. So after listening to your discussion, sometimes these things have to be done. And I know we, we don't, I understand your predicament, believe me. But we don't have a perfect, I don't think we have a perfect system to get us just exactly where we want to be down the road. Now, just this afternoon, county attorney and I were talking outside about artificial intelligence and its potential for the workplace, including places like the courthouse, right, Jeff?
Sure.
And in, in particular, in our discussion was how artificial intelligence is already making its place in 911 call centers. So there is potential, there, there is potential there to do with less human employees. I don't, I'm not technologically advanced enough to know when Fayette County can do something like this. But it's certainly, I think, a concept that's on its way. So if any one of you are schooled up on this, please let us know, you know, because it's, I, I think it would certainly take at least an initial investment as far as software and equipment and that sort of thing. But I, I think we will be able to utilize at least some of that down the road. When it comes to an office like, I don't know if it would fit into the auditor's office or the clerk's office or not, but who knows? We just don't know. But I, I'm not poking fun, but I wanted you to know that we did have to replace, or we did approve the replacement of some employees today. So this has got to be done, one way or the other. Anyhow, I'll, I'll move on from this and we, we gave permission for the health department to use the outside areas, parking lots and stuff. September the 6th, from 9:00 AM to 1:00 for annual health factor, which is always well-attended and considered successful. We also approved, now here we go again, a 144 request to hire a much-needed truck driver and heavy equipment operator at the highway department.
Are you hiring new or is this a replacement?
This is to replace a vacancy that has existed for quite some time. So we're actually, we're budgeted for more employees down there than we have. We're currently running about three or four employees less.
But you're actually not adding, you're just replacing.
Yeah. We we also, and I approved a resolution and all the documentation needed to advance our application for the OOR grant through OKRA as the owner-operated rehabilitation grant that we're applying for. That you have already approved $57,000 additional appropriation as our share of this. So if we're awarded, we will be able to distribute $500,000 to various citizens in the county that need help with a roof or that sort of thing. So we're going to concentrate on the aging-in-place group, which we have plenty of, and would score us 25 extra points on our application process by doing so. So hopefully that helps our chances of being awarded. So that is moving forward. We also approved the Purdue Pharmacy bankruptcy plan that we've been, we're being represented by a law firm is pursuing the continuing matters in the opioid settlement funds. And that, you know, it'll take some months how that will come out. We did decide today to petition the Indiana State Health Commission to take a, a second look, if you will, or a better evaluation, if that's a better word, the needle exchange program here in the county. We, and this was not a unanimous decision. The three of us don't completely agree on this matter. But we do know that there is a, a need among some members of our community for this program to continue. So if we, it is our. So if we, it is our hope that the State Health Commissioner takes a look at this with an unbiased, non-political view, we might get a, might get a different outcome than we might not. We would like this decision to be based solely on statistics. So did the statistics warrant the continuation of this program? That's what we wanna know, and if so, it should continue, and if not, then it should end. So...
So Dale, did you, are you saying you asked them to renew it, or not? What are you saying?
Yes, we're, we're gonna, we're gonna ask for it to be renewed, program to continue. But, uh, with the current situation between the disagreement between two Commissioners and the County Health Officer, there's no need to have that fight here. If the Health Commission, State Health Commission will hear our appeal, then we'll let them handle it from there. We also, um, approved some, some bids for some work we needed to get done. We are, uh, we approved a bid for some concrete repair, sidewalk, curb work for the women's jail facility. And we also approved a contract agreement, or bid, mind you, for milling and paving of the parking lot area around that building over there. And conceivably, we kinda expect to get this done by the end of the month. Now, I, I know what the next question is going to be, Bob, so I'll, everybody's gonna wanna know, okay, when is this project gonna be done? Yesterday, I talked to the project manager that works for Thor Construction, that has been in charge of this project over there, and I invited him to come to this meeting tonight with me to answer questions that you may have about the two-year overrun on this project. He promised he would be here, and he's not.
Surprise.
Something may have happened, I, I don't know. Jeremy's a nice guy, I get along with him well, but, but late this afternoon, I did get a letter from, um, Amber Beach at the Thor Construction Company, and she, in this letter, she says she is a project manager. But if you'd like, I'll read you this short note. She says, "Thor Construction Company has been waiting on Square D to integrate the panel for lighting. Securitas will need to assist with this process via pump. Other than the lighting panel, everything else should be completed and able to be controlled from the existing jail, from the Women's Detention Center. Throughout this project, Securitas has been very difficult to get a hold of and to work with. As per the Commissioner's request, the table will be relocated on Tuesday, April, April 12, 2025. We will, we have the flooring contractor scheduled to come the next day to pass the flooring. We would like to have a Commissioner approve the new table location before the table is folded back down to the floor on Tuesday. Corson is ready to schedule an owner training. Please let me know if Thor Construction should schedule this with Zach, or if you would like to set up the training date." Now, I think there's a typo in this letter when it refers to April 12. I think what they meant to say was August 12. And that pertains to the rearrangement of the furniture over there. And were you going to be there for that? Okay. Um, there has been some other rather terse emails that have exchanged recently, that I will go in to those details during a public meeting. So, we're, the Commissioners are doing what the Commissioners are able to do. If I could send Dale Munson over there to do the work at Square D as behind on, I'd do it. But we can't do that. If I could send Tim Patterson over there to do it, I'd do it. So, can I give you a date? I'm not gonna stick my neck out that far, no, I'm not gonna do that. But I, I, I hope that each day we're getting closer. So, we, we've heard, we've had target dates before, we've had promises before, and it didn't work out. So, and this has been going on now for two years, I understand, believe me. So that's where we're at today.
You realize it was built by the lowest bidder.
So, i-if you wanna take a swing at anybody, swing at one of them.
Not swinging at anybody, Dale.
Was there not a contract? I mean, coming into this...
There's a bond I pulled out there.
For a finish date?
Now, this, uh, this, this delay is gonna cost this contractor some money. I can't tell you right now how much, but it is gonna cost them some money.
Maybe it can pay for that work that needs to be done in that parking lot. That'd be a start.
Never know, yeah, yeah. So, do I need to add anything else?
I guess so.
Tracy?
Well, what about your Manlo Park thing? You gonna share about that, what we're getting ready to get bids on, or you don't need to? Because we didn't actually...
Oh, well, the, the Manlo project, we, we decided today, I had a couple, I had a couple of bids to do some work at Manlo Park today, but it got, um, tabled for a couple more weeks. And I, I've been in a mess up there for a year, and, um, just this afternoon, I've been notified by the DNR that they are going to require some permitting to, to do some work on the dam up there that I had scheduled to do. So, um, right now, the, the water in the lake is as low as it will go with the current drain system that it has. It's been there for eighty-six years. We're still holding about three feet of water on the bottom, the deepest part, covers about an acre and a half, two acres there. So, if I don't find a way to get rid of that, part of that lake will never dry, and to make it easier to do the desalination work, so...
It'll be easy to fish that way, just three feet, pick 'em up.
Yeah, 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 it would. But anyhow, I'm, I'm pushing, I'm pushing as hard as I can on this project.
I know you are, Dale.
Although, I have until, um, December 31st, 2026, to spend our first portion of the grant money that we've received. It'll, it may take till then to, to get, meet all the regulations and do, jump through all the hoops and have them to do. I mean, it's very frustrating, so, um, I'd like to give you a better report on that one. I have some really, really good news to report on, you know? Okay.
I have a question, and it involves Jeff. Are you overseeing, like, do you oversee that contract?
Yes, there's some, um, there's some, I don't wanna get into too much, because it'll be potential litigation, but there's liquidated damages and those kind of things. We have, um, we have withheld funds. I don't know if you know how these kind of projects work, but they're, they're paid out. You essentially make requests, and they're paid out, you don't just pay them a lump sum or anything, and we can, you can retain some funding, so we've retained, um, an amount that is gonna be close to what I think damages are, but maybe not enough. But it's easier to just keep than it is to try to sue them and get it from them.
I was gonna say, is it...
But we have, we have, the Commissioners have been very diligent, very responsible in retaining a significant amount that is there, that we've been instructed not to make any payments on until we get further than...
But have we suffered in the, in the long run with that, with the work?
We have, we have suffered, in my opinion, and again, I don't wanna get into too much, but I think we've suffered significantly financially and just overall use of the building. In a very, time is of the essence, and, and contract law, that's big language you probably have heard before when somebody says time is of the essence. Some contracts say it doesn't, time doesn't matter, it's just your hire us when we start and when we get done. This contract has a specific substantial completion date, and it's clearly not today.
But these, these monetary damages are, is it something like, no, your chickens still are hatched, I mean, you think we will get them?
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're holding on to them right now.
Okay, okay.
And we're gonna, we're going to, I don't wanna get into too much again, but, but a potential argument may be, we're not going to reimburse you for what you say you're owed, because we believe that the damages would be this, so therefore, we may keep you.
May I make a suggestion, Jeff, for future use? And that was part of my background. Any big projects in the future, make a put-up a bond for it. I mean, if you don't do it the time the bond kicks in, and it's just something to protect yourself from financial loss, just a bond, you say you can do it in this time? Okay, fine, but if you don't, the bond picks up the rest of it for you.
I'm familiar with bonds that, that where, like, a project goes awry, and it's just not getting completed at all, or the contractor goes belly up, those kind of things. I'm not familiar with a bond that says that it accelerates the second it's not completed. That's why you generally have something like liquidated damages and things like that. But I, I, I'm not saying there's not a bond out there, but that bond could be pretty pricey, and I don't know that it would encourage...
It's been for years, Jeff, and it's just you bond yourself to get the job done.
There's certainly bonds, there's certainly bonds in these projects, but I don't know of bonds that are, that are enhanced by just, they, they immediately become due, um, just based on that, that timeline was not done that day. They're generally like the contractor, you can't get a hold of them, and they're gone. My very first project I ever liked, had like this, was a six million dollar...
And this is the, the deal ending, but I got concerned when they first came in here, and they'd got it, that this amount here, but now we want additional money. Well, you know, you said you're gonna do it for this price, do it for that price.
They're not asking for additional money.
They did right off the bat.
Well, those are, those are change orders that you approve. But this is not, this is, they aren't asking for additional monies because it's taking them longer to complete.
Okay, if I remember right, Bob, we had two very small change orders that didn't cost us much money at all.
Okay. So, just to clarify, from the construction component, this is not costing us more money for them to construct it. It has very significantly cost us more money in engineering fees.
And loss of possible revenue.
And absolutely, other damages, absolutely, but, but our out-of-pocket is to the engineering firm, not to the contractor. We, we, they've not, they're not getting paid more to keep it going longer, if that's, if that's a concern, that's all. But the engineering firms, certainly, that's monies that are real, and that's then having to monitor a job, they're alleging they have to have somebody come and watch it every month, and you know, that does cost us more money, for sure. Now, we've worked out some agreements to kind of reduce that damage, but that's where we're at, that's, that's, that is part of our actual, real fiscal damage is that. Now, I'd say it's what, less than three percent of the project? I mean, which is a substantial number, but it's not, it's not as high as some of you might be thinking.
We certainly won't be able to recover as much as I would like to, so...
Right now, you're kind of happy to get out of it, out of pocket, not owing anything more than what the contract was for, and you just got hit. And then we can make a decision at the end day if we wanna sue them for more, but our kind of game plan, as far as the money we retained, is to not be out-of-pocket any money more than what it originally would have contracted to cost us. And then we deal with how much damages we had for taking so long and all the way. They're, they're, they are effectively very much in a real situation, costing themselves money by taking it home. Like, they're not, they're not making more money, in fact, they're losing money.
It costs everybody.
Costs everybody. It's just, it's just a bad deal for everybody. Maybe the only good deal is the engineering firm.
And we're certainly not the only ones frustrated with this. I know, uh, I hear on a regular basis from the prosecutor's office that they, they have need for that facility, and it's, uh, it's disappointing to know, to be that close and not be able to use it. But, uh, if, if you can, look at one bright side of this whole thing, is you have, really, Scott?
Okay, all right, I'm listening.
One bright side of this whole thing is, you have accomplished a significant project, and you accumulated zero debt. There's not gonna be any payments to make on this once it's done. I mean, it's, it's over, it's done with, it's paid for, zero debt, and I like that part of it. But debt's a four-letter word to me, so, you know, that, that's an accomplishment. Something that a lot of communities just couldn't do.
Dale, I'm glad you've got your job, okay?
Some days I wish you had, Bob.
No, 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 that's fine, I got enough problems of this.
Well, I've taken up enough of your time. It's good to see you all again, and if there's nothing else, I'll sit down.
Okay, Dale, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Dale.
Any other comments before we make a motion to close the meeting?
I want to thank Jeff for explaining that.
I don't know, sometimes I don't know if I'm making more confusion about it.
In as much detail as you could, I mean, I, I'm sure the whole community is dying to know that.
Someone would make a motion?
I'll make a motion too, Sharon.
Second.
All in favor?